Since nineteen seventy six. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, as soon as the attorney gets up here, we'll get started. And it's six o'clock right on the nose. So, welcome everyone to the Gastonia City Council Meeting, September sixth. And I'm sort of anxious for it to be move along a little more, to be a little bit more fall weather, cooler, I'm ready for that in my old age. But welcome everyone that's here tonight. And I'm gonna ask, turn the microphone over to Councilman Gallagher in just a minute for who's responsible for the prayer and is gonna have someone he's brought to deliver it. I'd like for us to be sure and remember if we could, we've had certainly another city, local tragedy, and just recently we voted in Wade White for, who was the chairman of the Gastonia ABC Board. And Wade, at say age seventy-six, he did pass away last week or so. And I want everyone to remember Shelley, his wife, and who was actually born and raised right down the street here. And so, and their son, and certainly he is in much less pain now than he was. And so, let's all remember Wade White, Wade White and his family. Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to call a friend of mine who I met on the bus probably several years ago. We formed a nice friendship. His name is Kevin Holderness. And Kevin's gonna pray in my stead. He is the president of the Gastonia Stake of the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints. And Kevin, if you'd mind?
Mayor Bridgeman, and your council, let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, as we pause a moment at the commencement of this city council meeting, we do so with gratitude in our hearts for the many blessings that we have received here in this area. We're thankful for our forefathers and for their foresight in establishing this community. And we recognize the responsibility that we have and the duty to carry forward, to deliver the promises that have been made to the people who reside here. We're thankful for the commission that this council has accepted to protect and provide for those who live here. We pray that their thoughts will remember those aged and fatherless and those widows who deserve assistance and who need attention. That Thy providence may be as bountiful upon those who are richly blessed and endowed as those who are in need. We ask a special blessing tonight to be upon the family of Wade White, his dear wife Shelley, and other members of his family. We pray that they will be comforted at this time of need. We're thankful for all those who serve as public servants in this community. And we pray that each one of them will be blessed. We're thankful for the endorsement we have of the city, the people that live here. And we pray that the decisions that are made here will be done in the light of day, with all facts known, that the proper decisions will be made. We ask Thy Spirit to be with those in this community and help them to take an interest in what goes on here, that those who come and go will feel of the spirit of urgency and the spirit of development, and that they will take an interest in the affairs of their community. We pray that Thy Spirit will be with those who protect us and who guard against theft and other crimes, that they may be blessed both with wisdom and judgment and with an understanding of the responsibility they have to become friends to everybody in the community. We pray especially that Thy Spirit will be here in this room tonight, that those who speak will be able to do so with clarity of thought, and that the message they have will be conveyed and understood, and that the spirit of contention will not dwell here in our midst. We're so thankful for the opportunity we have to live in this community and this country. And we ask Thee to invoke Thy Spirit upon us at this time in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for the prayer, Mr. Holderness. Okay, item C is the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion? So moved by Mr. Gallagher. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, Mr. Pierceall. Discussion, all in favor, please raise your hand. Approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of April ninth, twenty sixteen. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
So moved. Mr. Gallagher, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Pierceall. Discussion, all in favor, please. Thank you. Item E is Awards Ceremonies and Promotions Committee. Number-one proclamation is Constitution Week, presentation by Mayor Pro Tem Todd Pierceall.
Thank you, Mayor. If you will, your indulgence, I'll step down to the podium.
Please do.
Mayor and council, what I have is a proclamation regarding our constitution. And at this time, I'd like to ask for Dana Harper. She is with the Major William Chronicle Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. And she'll come forward to receive this proclamation. And I'll read the proclamation now. Says, "Whereas our founding fathers, in order to secure the blessings of liberty for themselves and their posterity, did ordain and establish a constitution for the United States of America, and at the culmination of months of deliberation, debate, and compromise, on September seventeenth, seventeen eighty-seven, the Constitution of the United States of America was signed. And September seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, marks the two-hundred-and-twenty-ninth anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And through all its changes over the years, the Constitution's foundation has endured and adapted, and it's the supreme law of our land. And Constitution Day and Citizenship Day are celebrated on September seventeenth each year during the celebration of Constitution Week, September seventeenth through September twenty-third. And the adoption of the Constitution and the independence guaranteed to American citizens, whether by birth or by naturalization, should be celebrated by appropriate ceremonies and activities during Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, John D. Bridgeman, Mayor of the City of Gastonia, do hereby proclaim September seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen, as Constitution Day and Citizenship Day; and September seventeenth through September twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen, as Constitution Week. And urge all citizens of Gastonia to reflect during this week on the many benefits of our federal constitution and the responsibilities and privileges of American citizenship. And it's signed on this day, the sixth day of September, in the year of our Lord, two thousand and sixteen, by the Mayor, John D. Bridgeman, and our city clerk, Sherri Dunaway." And I'd like to present this proclamation to you now. Thank you. Would you like to say?
I'd like to thank you, Mayor Bridgeman, as well as the council, for this proclamation. I accept it for our chapter, as well as all other chapters of the DAR that are located in Gastonia. I would like to invite you and all members of our community to go to the library and see the displays that have been put up in celebration of Constitution Week. There's one that's specifically aimed toward the children of our community, and one on the second floor for the adults. Thank you again.
Thank you both very much. Yeah, that's exactly what I was gonna say. How are your chickens doing?
I'm sorry, but everybody refers to you as the chicken lady now.
How are your babies?
Someone just a minute ago, several people have asked me this, is there something wrong in your life that people only wanna know about chickens?
About chickens?
They're laying and they're doing great and they're pleasant and it's amazing.
They're liking the weather. Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Donna. The second proclamation is Fire Prevention Week, and the presentation is by Councilman David Humphries. That's your E-two exhibit.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask Chief of the Gastonia Fire Department, Chief Welch, if you'd join me at the podium, please.
Proclamation, whereas the City of Gastonia is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living or visiting our city, and the Gastonia Fire Department's mission is to save lives and property and proudly serve the citizens and visitors of the City of Gastonia. And Fire Prevention Week was established to commemorate the great Chicago Fire. The tragic eighteen-seventy-one conflagration began on October eighth, which killed more than two-hundred-and-fifty people, left a hundred thousand homeless, and destroyed more than seventeen thousand four hundred structures. In nineteen-twenty, President Woodrow Wilson issued the first National Fire Prevention Day proclamation. And whereas nearly three thousand people die each year as a result of U.S. home fires, which averages to be eight American lives lost each day, and three out of five home fire deaths happen from fires in homes with no smoke alarms or no working smoke alarms, and working smoke alarms would cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And smoking materials, cooking equipment, and heating equipment are the leading causes of fire in the United States. And the National Fire Protection Association recommends at least one smoke alarm on every level of the home, including the basement, outside all sleeping areas, and in all bedrooms. And whereas Gastonia's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And the two thousand and sixteen Fire Prevention Week theme, "Don't Wait, Check the Date," replace smoke alarms every ten years, effectively serves to remind us of the dangers associated with cooking fires and to develop and practice home fire escape plans during the Fire Prevention Week and year-round. Therefore, the Mayor and Council of the City of Gastonia do hereby proclaim October ninth through the fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, as Fire Prevention Week in the City of Gastonia, and urge all citizens to protect their homes and families by heeding the important messages of Fire Prevention Week, two thousand and sixteen, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of North Carolina's Fire and Emergency Services. And witness whereof, I've heard and set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Gastonia to be affixed on this sixth day of September, in the year of our Lord, two thousand and sixteen, John D. Bridgeman, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman, Mayor, and the full council. I appreciate that, and I very heartily accept this, I'm gonna have the hundred-and-forty Gastonia firefighters. We'll spend the entire month of October in a more intense fire prevention effort in all the fourth-grade classes of the city, and also out in the nursing homes and anywhere else to spread the fire prevention. Appreciate the endurance of the fire prevention throughout the years. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Councilman, and Chief, thank you very much for the hundred-and-forty-plus, ladies and gentlemen, that you have that protect us. Okay. Item F is public expression. Each person is limited to a total of five minutes speaking time, and we'll have one person to sign up. Let's see, his name is Don Barkley, Gastonia, North Carolina, Witsen Road, thirty-one oh one.
You said it. And to add to the fire department, they did a rather good job yesterday with the truck turning over. I saw three trucks, quite a few police, and it was a bottleneck for a while, but they did a pretty good job of handling a bad situation. And I kept watching them go by and waiting on something to happen, but nothing happened. They finally opened the road up. That isn't why I'm here. On seventeenth of May, the council passed a resolution to do away with part of the Greenway. And if you would ask, pass this in to the mayor. Now, it's my understanding that the council does not answer questions in public recognition. That always made sense to me, because you never know what kind of subject people like myself are gonna pick. You can't be prepared. Now, I would request what I think is public information, is it says on that memo that DOT requested this action. If they did so request it, I would like a copy of the request. Thank you, sir. That's all my talk for today.
Any questions for me?
Any questions?
There are no questions, but staff can let you respond.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Come back and say this. Consent agenda, the, we have items one, two, three, four, and five. Is there anyone like to have any pull and discussed?
I would like to have number five pulled.
Internet and phone, okay. Any others?
I have one question. I don't wanna pull if I need to. I make the motion to consent between the minus item number five.
Okay.
In order to get that to conversation.
Your question wasn't in number five?
No, my question is actually about item number four.
Well, you just gonna skip over it?
No, I made the motion, he's taking it, so we'll go to discussion, and I'll ask the question during discussion.
But your motion is to approve the one, one, two, three, and four?
Correct.
Okay, okay, gotcha. And there's a second?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. All right. Any other questions? All in favor, raise your hand.
I was trying to see how we would do.
All right.
I, and this is, this is not to change that, I'm all for approving it, it makes sense. But when I read this, I probably should've called staff before tonight, but when I was reading over the agenda and saw that we were changing this bus route, it kind of registered with me back when Bethlehem was opening that center out in West Gastonia, and Jim, you were, I think, the primary leader in this, wanting to change a bus route. And all we heard was, it took practically an act of Congress to change a bus route. It was the hardest thing in the world to do, it would take forever. And then I see on the consent agenda, we're changing a bus route. I'm like, okay, why before was it so hard? And now it's just on the consent agenda for passage. I, you're losing me on that. So is it really that hard, or is it really not that hard?
Yes, it is. And Michael?
I see, Michael, I, she-
Karen, I asked Michael to go upstairs and put some stuff away, because Chuck Dellinger skipped out on us.
Let me answer it to the extent that I can. Michael would have more specific information. Any change in the bus route, just as we talked about, because we get federal funds, requires public hearings, requires a whole process, you have to document what you're doing, and in particular, in that case, it was an extension. This is a modification, which has to do with some safety. It was a lot, it was a lot smaller in its size, but they still had to go through the process.
So we had a public hearing?
Michael, regarding the bus change? Yes. The question is for this, for this, this is a relatively modest change to the Marietta run, but there was a question we had about what about extending bus services, about a year ago, where we were talking about going out to the new location of Bethlehem, and we talked about how complicated that would be, because all the buses are, the timing is predicated, they're hour-long headways, and you have to connect all that, you gotta go through public hearings and the rest of it. So how did this get changed so easily?
This was a small change that was, well, reviewed, because there was an unprotected left turn across traffic, and we wanted to make that change as soon as we knew about that, as soon as we evaluated that. So this is a very small change, and it's part of that overall transit study that should be coming out sometime in November. We'll look at all the routes at that point in time and see if we can add services then, and how that affects routes at that point in time. But this one was something that we needed to go ahead and modify now.
With a small change, do you have to have a public hearing?
From what I understood, it was advertised, and we're to the point now where council can take action, as federal transit folks have it.
So basically, the short is, this is a different situation.
Yes, and it's the same.
All that wraps up into, this is a different situation.
There are small little modifications, a safe, you know, like, for instance, a safety adjustment, that's not really considered, and it doesn't affect your runtimes. If you're gonna extend it on out, then that's gonna affect the runtime, and then you gotta figure out how you're gonna be able to cover this to get back to the transfer point, and it gets a lot more complicated. And then we're affecting a whole lot of people, and we have to do a lot of work. This was a safety issue, the left-hand turn, so easier.
Good enough. That was my question.
Drive fast.
Yeah.
Drive faster. Michael, one question on it. Was this, were there any accidents here with the buses, or anything like that, or?
No, it was just an evaluation of, there was not an accident.
Okay. Thank you.
It shouldn't make a left-hand turn at an intersection that's not protected, we should be a traffic sit, delay of access.
Okay. Any other questions of route modification? Okay, now, so the motion is to approve one, two, three, and four. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. And there's been a second.
Yes, sir.
And then we've had discussion.
Yes, sir.
All in favor of the motion, please. All right. Ma'am, it's approved. Item five is, is the one you wanted to bring to the discussion.
Right, the service contracts for the internet and phone. The one question I have is this. We had some difficulties with winds, wind stream?
Yes, we did.
And it was something that happened when it was-
It was a snowstorm.
Snowstorm?
Yeah.
Is that it? Did that regulate that?
February of two thousand and fourteen. We were actually out of service. The snow really started falling about nine-thirty, twelve o'clock, okay? We had an outage at nine-thirty. That outage was at City Hall and at the Police Department. So that took our number of lines down from seventy-two incoming lines down to twenty-four, okay? So operations was still answering, okay, so we have three locations. So we reported the outage, and the snow continued to fall, and Windstream said that they had pulled in all of their techs off of the road, okay? So that was Wednesday. Thursday, the snow continued, we continued to call, there was nothing. Friday, the snow was letting up, okay, so they're supposed to be dispatching. At this point, they've handed over to AT&amp;T, because they have a partnership there, okay? AT&amp;T shows up at the Operations Center and says, "We have a call, and we want to do a test." We said, "That, operations is fine, don't touch it." And so they wouldn't listen to us, because Windstream had placed the order, okay? So about the same time, City Hall and the PD came back up, but ironically, operations went down. So this continued for a number of days. It was absolutely ridiculous, everybody was appalled. From that, we learned that we could apply with the FCC and get a TSP code. It's basically telecommunications service priority. So we fill out the application, and they decide what kind of business we have and how critical we are. Well, of course, we're police and we're nine-one-one. So we have a high criticality now. So that's been in place since that point. We did have another failure with Windstream in April, it was on Good Friday. Again, that was because they just decided to look at our account, made changes to it, and service was down. So we were down for four hours during that period. So just totally appalling, but we've learned from that lesson. Going forward, we will have TSP codes for all three phone services, as we do now, as well as the two data services. So if we have any failure, we're getting top priority.
So with DC seventy-four, we don't anticipate having the same issues that we had with Windstream?
We do not. The situation with DC seventy-four is there a data center that's located close to the airport in Charlotte, okay? So they have five carriers that come into that hub, so our traffic is going out, five carriers, okay? So we're not dependent on one. Now, they are leasing Tom Warner line to get to our location at City IT, okay? So that's a vulnerability. So that's when we decided to go with Level Three as well, and they're coming into the City PD. That way, we have two connections, you know, not necessarily at all times, but we always have one. And our system will be load-balancing, so that data will go out both connections, so we can utilize anybody.
Excellent. Anybody have any other questions? If not, I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
Second. Second, but Pierceall. Okay. Thank you, Beverly. Any other questions, all discussion, all in favor of number five? Thank you very much. That's our consent agenda. Before we go in, just start the regular agenda, just take a minute here. Just, just to stay here, just guessing, is there possibly a boy scout or two in the house, anywhere that, if so, please stand up. Let's try and, oh my, there's two. Would you come forward to let us embarrass you a little, please? Not, not really, we're proud of you. Just state, if you would, just state your name and what, your scout troop and your scoutmaster today.
Paul Rogers, Troop Twenty-eight.
And Patrick Gibson, Troop Twenty-eight. And our scoutmaster is Dan Baker.
And what's your rank?
I'm second class, break first, very close to first class.
Good.
Second class.
And you're here for what badge?
Communications.
Now, is this one of the required ones to become Eagle?
Yes, sir.
Nice. Great. Do you like scouting?
Yes.
What do you like about it?
Everything.
Well, I have a question.
Yes.
For Eagle Scout, don't you have to do-
What, for, for Eagle Scout, don't you have to do a major project?
Yes, sir.
It's near the, near the end, what, what's your project's gonna be? Have you thought of that yet?
Yes, sir, we're not even close to that.
You're not close to that? I don't blame you, I'd wait a while, too, but.
It's kinda like asking a fourth grader what college she's going to go to. She don't know at that point.
Well, we appreciate y'all.
Good job, guys.
Thank you very much, being here. I think they'd ask me the best thing about it, and he said everything, that's a good answer. I, I vaguely remember, uh, the, the, the hot chocolate in the, they had a good chocolate at the bottom of it, up at the chill and brown. Chill, can't, can't remember.
The hot chocolate.
The hot chocolate.
Hot chocolate.
Food was good, too.
Hot chocolate.
Yes. Makes your hair burn.
Obviously, it did.
Makes, makes your hair lose. Regular, regular agenda now. Item six, public hearing for flood study, a YMCA, YMCA flood study. A presentation is by Mr. Tucker Johnson, uh, PE, Assistant City Engineer. Hello, Tucker.
Good evening, uh, mayor, members of, uh, council. Uh, the item before you tonight is a, uh, request for a special, is a.
Excuse me, Tucker, I'm sorry, I, I have to clear the public meeting, uh, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say, this is a, a public hearing for a, uh, request, uh, for a special exception to the no, city's no-rise ordinance. Uh, YMCA has, um, submitted a site plan and a flood study, accompanying flood study, um, for an encroachment into the hundred-year floodplain. Um, there should be a map, uh, behind this item that shows the approximate extent of the encroachments. Um, there's a triangle and a rectangle, and the hundred-year floodplain is shown, and the overlap between the two is the approximate encroachment. You can see that, um, there's barely any overlap, um, it's pretty minor encroachment and a negligible amount of fill. Uh, nevertheless, a flood study was performed and, uh, a mathematical analysis that showed that there was, um, a zero-point-zero-zero rise in the base flood elevation of Catawba Creek. Um, and the engineer did certify that with a no-rise certification. Um, provided that to the city, we reviewed the flood study, uh, we are in agreement, um, we feel like it's accurate and complete. And we recommend approval of this special exception, um, to the no-rise ordinance. Kevin Caldwell, with Geoscience Group, performed the flood study. Um, he's here tonight to answer technical questions regarding the flood study itself. I can, if you have any questions from city staff, I'd be glad to try to answer them. And I think Tony Sigmund is here also, in case you have questions for the Y.
I've got three sign-ups, and, uh, Mr. Caldwell, you go first, and you just sort of stand by, if you will.
Okay.
Make an address. Mr. Kevin Caldwell, if you're, if you're through, you know, Tucker. Your address, please, sir.
Yeah, my, I'm Kevin Caldwell, uh, civil engineer with Geoscience in, uh, Charlotte.
All right, I have your address.
Go ahead. Well, I think Tu- Tucker covered it pretty well. You can, on that map, I think you could, um, the, the water surface profile on Catawba Creek is really being controlled in this area by the bridge and Robinwood Road. And then the dam, this is just a little backwater, so that's not, you know, that little bit of fill for the dam is, has no impact on the flood elevations either.
Okay, anyone have any questions of Mr. Caldwell?
Do we have to read the findings and facts into the record? At, at the sign of the mercy?
Yeah. Yes, sir, Doc.
As far as the, the dam improvements go, um, I didn't mean it that way, Tom. Is that, is that a, uh, is that an earthen dam and therefore, or is there just, uh, more fortification of that with more fill? Is that what that is?
It, it is an earth-filled dam, and the downstream slope on it now is like a one and a half to one, so it's, it's, it's pretty steep. It's hard to maintain. We're gonna flatten it out to about a four-to-one slope. That's four horizontal to one vertical, so that they can mow it and, you know, be safe on that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Oh, yeah, not for him.
Okay, um, maybe if you do have any more, we'll, we'll call you back. I, I'll go ahead and call the other two names on there, so, uh, that have signed up, maybe you can stay with them. Mister, oh boy, Mister Frank Craig. Glenn Eagles, hey, Mister Craig, you gonna come up here and say anything? Yeah, this, the, the three of us go to the same hairdresser. Since y'all pick.
Tony's is more polished.
We were getting woolly until we decided to get hair done.
Tony's, Tony is more polished than you two.
Well, it is that. Are y'all, you here to say anything you want us just to talk about your hair?
We just wanted us to talk about our hair.
Okay, well, all right, Glenn, you got your dress, and Frank?
Well, I'm here just to answer.
Oh, just to answer.
Any questions about the site, to act of what can be said in, and, um, anything specific about the site?
All right.
It is certainly coming along and heading by there.
It is there.
It is moving fast, and the building itself, I think, will probably be going up, the, the steel footing's probably in about a week or so. So you'll be, you'll start seeing some vertical construction, so.
I had a question, and I don't know if it's for you guys, or this is more for Tucker, or Ed, or who, who's the score, but. There's a lot of earth being moved out there. I mean, like you said, that site is really active. Isn't a, getting a flood study approved at this point a little late? Shouldn't this have been done a while back? I mean, you're already moving the earth, what, what if it wasn't approved? What are you gonna do then?
But the, a lot of the, the earth that they were moving was not in the floodplain. And, and that, that is, is common, you'll, you'll see that being done. They have to have an erosion control permit often from the county. But as long as they stay out of the floodplain, then they can do the general grading. Or if they're gonna do any work in the floodplain, then they have to go through a process like this.
Gotcha, gotcha.
That was it, no biggie.
Okay, any other questions of either one of these gentlemen? Tony, you've got anything you wanna add to?
Well, we, I just wanna say thank you, um, to the mayor, city council, and to the staff. They have been incredible working with us, um, helping us make this project something that has been, uh, smooth on our end and, uh, been just super helpful. If there's been a problem, they've, they have been, how do we solve the problem? How, how can we be part of the solution rather than anything else? So we, we're just very appreciative of the, the city of Gastonia.
Kevin?
Tony, one question. Since you did start moving the dirt around, when do you plan, uh, it to be completed, when the building is all?
Mm-hmm. We're, um, yes, sometime down the road.
That's a good answer.
Next September is what our, our goal is, but, um, that date gets moved out just a little bit, based on different decisions that we make. So, um, we're, we're trying to hone in on the date right now.
Excellent.
So it'll be next fall.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Can we make a motion and then close the public hearing?
Well, we, I think we can make a motion to close the public hearing and, and approve.
We don't have to close the public.
As long as we make the findings of fact that are set forth on page six dash two and six dash three.
Do they need to be read for the public corrector?
Yes.
Okay, so make a motion to accept the findings of fact, close the public hearing, and approve as recommended by staff. How's that? Did I get everything?
Yes, sir.
All right.
And they are right here.
That is the motion.
Second.
Findings of fact. All right, the second by Mr. Gallagher, Jerry. Any other questions, comments? He got all that one time, he closed it and.
Got it all, yes, sir.
And approved.
Yes, sir.
All in favor, Ray?
Moving it right along.
It's gone. Thank you, gentlemen. Ed, I did not want to leave you out of the, about the hairstylist.
He didn't have any hot chocolate, though.
Yeah, I, I, I'll tell you, though, it's, it's really, you know, one of the advantages of being like this is I, I had the city hat, which has the nice, it's a nice-looking city hat, it's raining. And I said, oh, I gotta find something to cover the hat. And I said, well, wait, I don't need that. You just walk out.
Just roll it off?
You just let, okay, just let it roll right off? That's the greatest thing, greatest thing in the world.
Curl it out, I'll let.
Kinda get your glasses wet, though.
That's a little problem, yeah. And did you get wet at the, when the Panthers beat Pittsburgh?
I did, you know, my grandchildren made me go to the, my grandchildren made me go to that game.
Yeah, I'm sure they made you.
And.
That was tough.
Sorry for your loss there.
The fourth preseason game, you know.
Okay, um. Mister Boston, ready to go. Uh, item seven is a request for resolution authorizing condemnation proceedings of South, South Street, Second to Third Avenue. Um, storm drainage improvements, presentation by Mister Rusty Boss, Director of Engineering. Just saw it a few minutes ago, come on.
I'm, I'm glad you did, mayor, council, um, I, I, I wanna, I included a picture in your agenda, I'm gonna put it on the Elmo so the folks in the audience and anybody streaming, watching can also see. If I can, all right, so, uh, this is as it sits today. So this is the definition of a failed storm drain system. Uh, the pipe is gone, there's just an open hole at the end of that catch basin there. Um, this, this is just. You know, this is as bad as it gets. Uh, so we are in the process of trying to repair this storm drain system. Um, we've worked with, uh, three of the five property owners that we need to for these repairs. Two of them, uh, one of them absolutely did not want to talk to us at all and immediately referred to us, referred us to his attorney for, for condemnation proceedings. Uh, the other one is, is, uh, Community One Bank, they are agreeable to providing the, the property at, at no charge. Um, they just wanna make sure, they wanted a letter from us stating that the other people also, uh, donated their property, which all three of the other ones did, for obvious reasons. There's, they have a benefit to this system being repaired. Um, so we've done that, uh, we expect them to be signing that, that easement to us, uh, any, any day now. We included them in the resolution simply for flexibility, in case for some, whatever reason, uh, they get hung up with some bureaucracy or something. We can still move forward with the project and, and fix this hole that you see here. Uh, a- again, we'll continue any negotiations that, uh, that, uh, was it Cornwallis, um, Investments wants to have with us, but they've indicated they, they're not interested at all. Uh, so we will probably be moving forward very quickly with condemnation proceedings on that. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Go ahead. Pierce, all.
Rusty, the, the photos you provided to us in our agenda obviously show the, um, drain and how it's routed all down it. But then in relationship to the map, how bad is the erosion on that Cornwallis LLC? Where, where is that photo that you showed us? Where is that on this map?
Okay, so the, uh.
I can't see that.
I'm, I'm sorry, the, the red area here is the Cornwallis property.
Right.
The, the hole is this area right here.
So it, it's, it's affecting them more than anybody?
Yes.
And they gave no indication why they want us to just go ahead and condemn? I mean, they basically are like, talk to our lawyer, condemn it.
Yes.
Is, is this a building? I mean, do they have offices?
There, there used to be, I believe, a hair salon in that place. I, the last, I, the last time I drove by it, um, late last week, it had a for-sale sign in front of it.
I was gonna say, there's two for-sale signs. And there's one, the, the old, is that the Dr. Woody and Dr. Prince, that, that, that building that's up next to the, 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 uh, Temple Emmanuel? Mm-hmm. And, uh, it, it's got a, well, that must be the one that, uh, you showed that Community One.
And, and they are, uh, Community One is, is actually, I'll put the map back up.
They must be facing South Street.
So Community One is facing South Street, it's the very back corner, this is all sunken parking, back behind it, or low-lying parking.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this, this is the one building that is for sale, and they have provided all of this easement for us. Uh, this building is the one that, uh, is, is also for sale. Uh, and that's the Cornwallis property, their parking is in the rear of that building, so it's actually their parking lot that's in most jeopardy right now.
Rusty, do they not, is, is there any reason given why they're making it so difficult to fix something that's gonna benefit them?
They just do not care for, for the, the, the way that we acquire right of way at the city. Um, I, I'm, I have no idea.
They sued us in two thousand nine over drainage problems, and we resolved the problem and fixed it, um, so.
They being.
LA, it was, Cornwallis Investments was previously called LAP Investors LLC. And they filed a lawsuit against the city in two thousand nine, they were represented by Morris Keeter. Uh, we came to a settlement and did what, what we could to fix it at that time. Obviously, you know, the problem continues. I think this is gonna be a more expensive fix by far than what we did in two thousand nine.
This will be, yes, what we did in two thousand nine was more along the lines of a spot repair. This is a replacement of the system all the way down to Third Avenue, so this is a substantial.
Say, four hundred, four hundred thousand dollar project.
Today's bidding may be closer to five.
All I can think of is sometimes people like to be condemned because it has some sort of tax repercussions for them that are favorable. I don't know, that's, that's sheer speculation.
I mean, we're looking at such a small square footage of area compared to the rest of the property. Okay, thank you, Rusty.
It is a small area, staff did everything we could to try and redesign it to not have to acquire their property. There simply is no way to do it.
Yeah.
And not carry the amount of.
Well, I mean, I understand, you, you gotta be able to get equipment in there and, and materials and stuff. I mean, when, and when it's all done and finished, it essentially looked like nobody was ever there, other than the hole being gone.
That's the intent, yeah.
And, and just to be clear, right now, Community One is on board. We're just going ahead and voting to condemn that part as an option, should the negotiations go down. I just want it to publicly be known that Community One Bank was cooperating.
Absolutely, they're very cooperative, uh, they've, uh, they understand the benefit to their property of it, and, and they've indicated that they will donate the property to us.
I'll make a motion if there's no more questions.
Yes, sir.
I, I make a motion that we proceed with the condemnation of the, um, Cornwallis Investments LLC, uh, partners' property and the Community One Bank property, as presented.
Motion, Mr. Pierce, all, Jerry, second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Keller. Any other questions?
I have a best question for, for Rusty.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this is, it's a little bit off the subject, but it pertains to the city. Are these type of projects becoming more prevalent? Is this something that as we, as we go on, that we can expect more and more of these?
I, un- unfortunately, we've been doing these things my entire career here at the city. Uh, we're, we're very old, I should say, we're, we have very old infrastructure out there, some of it was done very well. The, this drainage system ties into a, an arc, a bridge, brick-arched over under Third Avenue that we think was like a WPA project, and it's doing great. Uh, so you find these very old things that are doing very good, you also find some very old things that are in need of a lot of help. But I would say this is pretty typical, it's, it's a larger size, but it's very typical of what we find.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, Rusty? Ready to vote? All in favor? Mister Mayor, before Rusty sits down, can I take a minute and ask a question about someone else? It has nothing to do with that, Rusty, but while, while you're here, if you could give us an, uh, just a short update on, uh, Myrtle School Road? And do you have any idea when the Stagecoach Road Bridge is gonna reopen?
I have.
I've got three calls today about that, it was supposed to have been September first.
I don't have a clue about Stagecoach Bridge.
I don't know if you had heard anything or not.
That it's a NCDOT project and, and I just haven't heard from them on that, or, and I, I, I'm sorry, I don't have anything, I'll see what I can find out.
I know, they hadn't, they haven't updated anything in the paper lately.
I'll, I'll get in touch with their contr- their construction people and see what I can find out.
If, if you could, I appreciate it, I've had some, some calls about it.
Myrtle School Road, I'm gonna say I'm cautiously optimistic, cautiously optimistic. That's, uh, we had a very, uh, very good, um, uh, meeting with them, very, very sobering meeting with them about our expectations and their performance. Um, they've indicated that they are throwing everything they got into this project now.
They're not trying to do other projects now at the same time?
No, no, they've said.
There's a lot of people out there.
They said that all of the other projects that they had been doing, where the people on this project were at, are now finished up, and so everybody now is on this project.
So we get to be the other project now?
Yeah, yeah, so now we're the project making everybody else know. Um, but seriously, they indicated a, a very aggressive schedule. We're gonna be meeting with them routinely and, and looking at their progress. Um, they understand that their performance over this next month or so, well, from here on out, um, we sort of put them on notice that our, our next call is not gonna be to them, but to their bonding company. And, and we're, we're, we're just gonna get the project completed.
Well, I, I've, I've noticed, too, along with, with Todd and the others, that there are more people out there now. Uh, you can tell by more traffic being backed up, but that's, if they'll get it finished, then that'd be great. I've, I've noticed too, along with Todd and others, that there are more people out there now. You can tell by more traffic being backed up, but that's, if they'll get it finished, then that'd be great. Last thing, since we were talking about the stormwater problem we just voted on, the find and fix, is it kind of moving along?
The sewer find and fix is finding all kinds of problems and fixing it. So we're, we're making some good progress. There's some things that we, we're thinking we would find that we didn't. There's some things that we didn't expect to find that we are. But we're making progress on it and getting that system tightened up. So, very pleased so far with it.
That's good. Thank you, Rusty. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Rusty.
Okay. Item eight is the city attorney's report. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Mayor, at the end of the meeting tonight, at the, after announcements, I am gonna ask you all to go into closed session to discuss two cases. And we'll have to ask the audience to leave at that time. We will come back into open session to adjourn, but that will just be for, for just a minute or two. But I am gonna need, normally it's no report, but I'm gonna need some of your time tonight. I do apologize.
Okay.
Now, I've got that motion to make at the end.
Item nine, city manager's report.
Mr. Mayor, Members, Council, Councilman Kellag asks for an update on our work with the opiate issue. And if the chief could just come forward and talk about, this is that inter-jurisdictional work that we're doing with the other municipalities in the county and actually the regional to deal with this problem, nationwide problem.
Yes, the opioid problem is a problem that we're facing here in our community through prescription drugs and through illegal drugs across the community, across the state, and really across the nation. And it's something that we're all trying to come together and deal with. And we've had a couple of community meetings and what this has resulted in is moving towards a drug diversion and treatment program that we're calling D-DAT. But we're trying to come together with as many professional organizations we can to address the problem and, and the treatment and how we can move forward. One of our partners is Karamo Hospital, and they were kind enough to, to really show their dedication to this problem by providing Narcan to our law enforcement officers across the county. They have provided that to us at no cost. We don't have it yet, but they've committed to that. We're gonna begin our training with that next month. GEMS is to provide the training for law enforcement officers on how to administer. It's a nasal spray. They're gonna provide the training. And then, once they've had, the officers have had the training, the product will be given to them to, to have for use.
Chief, explain what Narcan is.
Narcan is a medicine, a nasal spray that can combat the effects of an opiate overdose. And we have found with, the fire departments are already using it, GEMS is already using it, and we have found that it has saved many lives already across the city and across the county. And so now, law enforcement officers will also have that at their disposal to be able to dispense if they come across that situation where someone has overdosed on some type of opiate. Also, with, among the partners that we have now that are working towards the solutions, there's been an MOU that has been developed. That MOU is being signed. The police department has signed that to be a partner in addressing this problem. And that is moving out. And a location to, to, to basically have this group has been identified as well. And, and they're moving towards having a location where there can be a diversion program set up to help address this. Now, I would like to say too, that, you know, as a law enforcement officer, you know, we're also doing our part to continue to enforce the law. And, you know, if there's illegal activity or the use of illegal drugs, then we certainly will do our part from the law enforcement side. We're also working with a number of federal partners and federal task forces to look at where some of the illegal drugs are coming in to the county, where that's coming from, and, and making the appropriate arrests and seizures as we move forward. I know just here in Gastonia, year to date, there's been about eight to ten pounds of heroin seized that has come into the city. And so, so we're doing our part on the law enforcement side as well. But beyond that, we also wanna work with folks who have become addicted, who, who continue to have a problem, and, and to see if we can't find some resources to help them through this and to help get them to be a more productive part of, of our, our city and county. And, and with the D-DAT, the Drug Diversion Treatment Program, we're looking for a longer term solution. You know, we, you know, I'm gonna say as a, as the police chief, we can't arrest our way out of this problem. You know, we can, we can make arrests, but oftentimes these folks will find themselves right back into the situation again if we don't find a better solution to get them some help, to get them back, to get them through the addiction and get them back into the workforce where they're working and being productive and beyond this problem. So.
Just a, a brief comment. I was, I was at a, a film presentation that Phoenix held a couple, couple days ago. And Chief Britton was there and, and I'm just so, I'm always proud of, of our city police and, and everything that they're doing. And one of the points that was brought up by all of the presenters there was the fact that we have to have more awareness in our community and more education. And this, this is part of what's happening here. And you all have been a part of that for, for many, many months. And, and in a lot of ways, you were way ahead of the curve. Everybody else was playing catch up. You all saw what was happening and what was coming down the road before the rest of, of our community even saw what was about to happen. And there's so many aspects to this and, and it's just a very, a very complex issue, but the only way it's ever going to get better is by bringing awareness to, to what's happening. So thank you for, for that. We appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
One, one question, Chief. Are they doing anything with the schools at all with D-DAT? Are there people going out to speak to the students?
There, there is a prevention element to this, and that's gonna be pushed forward as well, to, to, to push that word out to, to everyone, to, to be on the lookout and to know what to look for and to, to also talk about the dangers of. Because really, prevention is the key. You know, you don't want someone to get into this problem to begin with. You know, once they're into this problem, it is sometimes very difficult to, to step away from. And so really, prevention is a big part of, of what we're gonna try to do.
Because up north, I know that in New Jersey, where my folks are at, in a small little town, two and a half hours from Manhattan, there are high school kids that are overdosing. And it is a bad situation. And I'm, I'm just kind of fearful that it's gonna be drifting down here. And I just want kids to know ahead of time, you know, and, you know, what are the ramifications of it, what they're really doing to correct their lives. I just wanna say thank you for all that you're doing. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Chief, we don't have the DARE programs anymore, do we, in the schools?
We, we do not. We, we did have that for a number of years.
Was that a federally funded?
It wa, it was. Back in the early nineties, I was actually one of the DARE instructors. I would down at the schools and was a part of that prevention program. But that's no longer in the schools as we speak.
That's a shame. Something like that would really help, especially the, the earlier grades. That seems like that's where a lot of the attention was put, was third grade up to seventh, eighth, around in there, when the kids were most impressionable. I know both my daughters, they, they loved the program. They went through it. And they actually remembered what they were told, because it was put across a way to where they were taught to as kids, not as adults. So they were able to absorb the information. But it's a shame, we don't have anything like that now that is comparable, that this, the part with the opiates could be worked into. Because it, it's, it's, they're still drugs. Drugs are drugs. But hopefully, there'll be some, somebody on the federal level that will take notice and send out some more money to the, through the Education Department. Or Homeland Security or somebody, you know, somebody's gotta ask the question of the, the ones that control it and just tell them we need money to educate the kids.
There are a number of prevention strategies that's been discussed right now. We're looking at some possibilities, so that, that may be a direction that we go to.
That'd be great. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chief.
Here, the other item that Council McKellag wanted to report on deals with what you have in front of you, the municipal government and Citizens Academy. Michael, you wanna come up and say a few words on that?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Yes, in front of you is the application package for the inaugural Municipal Citizens Academy. I think it has all the information included. We're looking at getting applications submitted by November, up to twenty-five citizens of Gastonia. And this would begin the first council meeting in January and conclude with graduation at the council meeting in June. And it covers all aspects of the city very tightly, because there are so many services provided by the city. But everyone, all the department heads have pitched in and, and have their, their dedicated time and are getting materials submitted. And we'll have a good binder of information for those that can participate. Be happy to answer any questions.
I'm really, I, I'm really impressed and really excited to see this. And, and were you involved in a similar project in, previously? Is that correct?
Yes, sir, I, I was. We did this in Cramerton. And, and there are a number of municipalities that do this as well. And, and we've borrowed from several of them how the model is set up here.
Well, thank you. I think it's wonderful. And, and for those who are volunteering their time and, and coming to be a part of this, it really is why we're here. There's so many people, I think, that are disenfranchised and disillusioned. And if we can just help a couple of those folks to have a better understanding of local government and appreciation and to get their, and to help them just be better citizens, I think that's wonderful. So, thank you for, for the presentation.
If there's any way that you can spread the word, let folks know, it is on the city's website. We'll use some social media as well, churches, any civic groups, HOAs, as, as much as we can possibly get the, get the message out. Be happy to go and speak with anyone about it.
What, what tabs under the city's website would they look at?
I think it is right now floating on the billboard that's on the homepage.
Okay, so it's on the, okay.
Yes, sir.
How many people can you accommodate?
Up to twenty-five. We, we would love to have extras so that we can begin the, the number two course. So that would be great.
Are you gonna try to do it January to June each year?
I think that would be an honorable goal, to have this every year.
Any other questions? Michael?
Okay, thanks, sir.
Ian?
There's a few other things that the chiefs wanted me to remind you. One, we, we have a lot of notices here, but one of the, one of them has to do with the nine eleven celebration. Last few years, we've gone to the two different fire departments and, and had two different celebrations. This year, it's the fifteenth anniversary, and we're gonna have it at the Police Memorial right in, on Long Avenue. And so the fire trucks will be there, the police department will be there. Both police and fire will be centralized. So this is at, at three o'clock on September the eleventh. And so just to remind you, it's not where we normally go. It's, it's actually a new location. So we're, we're at the police station this year. And then the only, the only other couple of quick items, the city was fortunate enough to get some funding for downtown improvements in the state budget. So what we're doing is we'll have an application in, we'll, we'll be funded probably first of October, but it had all, these are basically physical kind of things that had to be done in your downtown and had to be finished by March thirtieth. So we're gonna be doing an improvement at pedestrian access on Oakland, crossing Franklin. Right now, there is no pedestrian access. There's also funding that will go to our, our building, the two twelve west, west main. The arts building, the, the rear of it has, has, has decayed a bit. So we're gonna be improving the painting and, and improving the fire escape and also doing some, some roof repairs there. And then the third aspect is there's some new development over there on, on three twenty-one, an airline. And as that development, that's a gateway into downtown. We're gonna do some, some basic streetscape improvements there. So we'll do that with this ninety-four thousand dollars that we have. There are projects that we can do and get out, and it's, they're not encumbered by a lot of other regulations. And we think we can get those improvements done. And, and also in October, we're gonna have three different celebrations going on. The Lorette, the historic preservation folks, they're going to come. In the middle of October, they're gonna have their preservation conference, and they're gonna be celebrating the redevelopment and the beginning of these new homes, these not tiny houses, but small houses. Small house love, I think they're called. But there'll be banners and everything up in Lorette. Downtown, we're gonna be doing, Rachel has been doing a lot of work in terms of some jazz concerts. And also, the council has, has approved that, the new logo with arts and antiques. So we're gonna have all that going on. And at the same time, the, the countywide effort, the go banners about, you know, all of the towns are supposed to have their downtowns with go banners. Well, the city is so broad and we're doing so many different things. What we're gonna do is not, because we're also doing arts and antiques downtown. We're gonna do the go banners in the places where we have areas where we want people to see. Everything from Crowder's Mountain to the Shield Museum, to the municipal golf course, to the Greenway, to the new YMCA, all of the community centers, those kind of places throughout the city. And so we're gonna be having go banners too. So all that stuff's going on in, in, in October, and it's all good. So that's... Pardon me?
And the zombie wall.
Oh, and, and the zombie wall.
And the fall fest.
And the fall fest. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
I, I have a question. The kind of gateway that you're talking about on three twenty-one, do we already have some plans for that, or is that still conceptual? So I, I don't know if you remember, I talked about this some time ago, you know, when the property... Well, no, it's...
Yeah, that, that, that's gonna require state DOT approval. It would be a harder, longer process.
No, this is like a stone wall with metal lettering and lights that say, you know, welcome to downtown Gastonia. It's very simple with some plantings and a stone wall and some metal lettering. It's beautiful.
Not the iron?
No, 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 no. This would be...
Because we talked about that.
Yeah, and this is in the, kind of the intersection where three twenty-one comes back together, where the city owns that land where we condemn the building.
Right.
Yeah, no, this would be a beautiful little project.
Yes, I think we're, okay, let, let's get together, because we're gonna do some of that.
Very doable, too. Very doable.
City Council reports. Mr. Kellag, you start over there?
Thank you very much. It's been a busy couple of weeks here. I attended an open house with, for the Islamic Society. And we were all, I believe, we were all invited to that. And I'm glad they, I'm glad they extended that invitation. It was very eye opening and very nice to see so many people in the community going there just to, to hear from them and to learn a little bit more about some of our community members that we don't often hear or see from very, very much. So that was a really good experience. I was honored to give the opening remarks at the second downtown Gastonia Pokemon crawl this past weekend. It's really great to see the downtown merchants, how excited they are, and they're all kind of pulling together and, and helping one another. And it's really, from a, from a business standpoint, they're doing all the right things to try to bring people downtown. So that was a, a great thing to be a part of. And they, they're actually having another one in conjunction with the zombie walk. So they, they're working together to, to do both events on the same day. I, I wanna just make a couple announcements about Acre Center. And I think we all read in the paper and, and heard that they are going into foreclosure. As a manager of one of those businesses that, that's located there, I'm really hopeful. You know, I, I know it's uncertainty. I know that for businesses, nobody wants to hear that that's going to happen to the, the development that they are a part of. But I'm hopeful that somebody with a vision, somebody who understands the, the true value of that property, somebody who wants to work with the city and, and make something really good happen there, I'm hopeful that, that something good will, will come out of this. And my only comment, if there's anybody out there and that might be listening, whoever does get this property, I hope they'll work with some of the local shops that are there. Jackson's Cafeteria, Keel Insurance, some of these places have been there for years. And, you know, they, they haven't really had anybody listen to them. Nobody from the management company has heard from them well over a year. So these places, I'm sure would welcome a, you know, somebody that would just say, hey, here we are, what are, what are your concerns? So I'm hoping that they'll reach out to some of those places as well. Last, I, I just wanted to say that I attended a informational meeting with Prevent Child Abuse Gaston. And with everything that's happened recently in the last couple of weeks, and it was a very emotional, very raw meeting, where people just spoke very frankly about the issue of abuse and, and how we respond to that here in Gaston County. I hope, I hope that as we all talk and as people talk about this issue and as there's vigils and meetings, that it's not just all talk because we talk too much about the things that are happening around us, the violence, the abuse. And I don't know what the answer is, but I do hope that we, as a community, can come together and really start to put some action to our words. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Colonel.
Another one. Gallo.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Councilman Kellogg, you're exactly right about Acres. I'm looking forward to someone new coming in there. I know my community watch, Sherwood, they had pushed this forward for us to put that letter out and I just want to give credit to Bill Gross and Phil Hindley and Roger Rask and Dan Allman. They came together just to, they were concerned citizens to find out what went on with Acres. What's going on? You know, it doesn't look like anything's going on. And then, you know, we contacted them and then we pursued them and we asked them if they were going to be doing anything with it and then we heard that they were gonna, now it's, they're foreclosed. I just hope someone picks it up, turns it into some type of mixed development, turns it into, you know, a beautiful center that could, you know, can be had if you do some type of mixed development where people can go and shop and make it, you know, make it available maybe for a fresh market or Trader Joe's. I mean, right in the middle, it'd be perfect right there. Yeah. Councilman Pierceall, you're exactly right. I mean, it just takes somebody with some vision and, you know, money, money always helps. Every cause needs a champion. The other thing is, one of my constituents had called me, sent me a Facebook message telling me that Leinberger Park equipment was dilapidated and I needed to go down there and look at it. Well, Charmaine and I went down there and, you know, we walked down the Greenway to see what was going on there. Everything looks fine there. Walked back, went over to the playground, checked out all the playground equipment. Everything's functional, functioning fine. I mean, we couldn't find anything wrong with it. So, we went up by the Spray Park and looked that over and Spray Park is in tip-top shape. Now, they wouldn't give me a ride on the train, but I tried. But, you know, I spoke to them and it's a dollar for any kid that's under, I think, age ten or so. And that was running fine. I spoke to them, went over to the pool and looked at that. Now, the things I found out there was they need a battery in order to do better vacuuming of the bottom of the pool. And they also need, with lazy river, doesn't connect to filter out some of the things. They need that to be corrected. But other than that, that pool looks really nice. I asked the guys, I said, you know, since it's been a really hot summer, how has business been? They said they sold out ten days straight. That's the morning session and the afternoon session. They had three hundred people, that's the maximum they could hold in there. They average a hundred and fifty people at a time. And they have a giant slide that goes on there and kids cannot go on the slide unless they swim two laps of the pool. So, that encourages them to take the swim lessons. I think it's a really neat thing that they're doing up there and I didn't find anything wrong with Leinberger Park. I was gonna tell Chuck, way to go, keep up the good work. And I did report back to the citizen, but other than that, everything's fine there. Even the bathrooms are clean. Just wanted to let you know. The other, one question I have, Ed, is this Franklin Boulevard, I noticed that there's some construction going on down there at the end, in the middle of the street. What is that about?
Is this near the YMCA?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's actually part of the find and fix. There was a sewer line there and the state's gonna come and do some repaving, probably not in the spring, but that was an area, there was a collapse, it looked like information that there was a sewer line collapsed there. And so, that's what they're doing.
That's the same thing about the county police station?
Yeah.
They have a vehicle in there.
And Mr. Mayor, that's the end of my report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, not too much to report. We had a, the DGMA, which is the Downtown Gastonia Merch Association, had a meeting this morning that I attended. And kind of echo a little bit of what Councilman Kellogg said. I can't say enough about that group. You know, we've had attempt after attempt after attempt downtown for the merchants to come together and form some kind of association and have some kind of unified voice on what they want going on down there. And every attempt has failed and this group has really got their act together. They have constructive meetings, wonderful ideas. I mean, you know, the whole Pokemon thing was them. The Fallen Antique Festival came out of the downtown merchants. The Zombie Walk came out of the downtown merchants. So, they are really showing that, you know, not only do they own a business downtown, but they are putting forth the effort to make it succeed with everything they've got. And they've had some hiccups and they worked through them and moved right along. None of this disaster, you know, the end of the world kind of scenarios where they break up and the group's gone. So, I can't say enough about that group. And in attendance as well was the Yorkchester, I wanna make sure I get it right, it's the Historical Neighborhood Association. And they are starting to work with the merchants very well and actually planning some events in conjunction with events that are going on downtown that will highlight some of the historical homes and also just some of the neater architectural features of some of our older buildings in downtown as far as like tours and things like that, education. So, a lot of neat things going on with there and I was very pleased to go to that meeting. And I did miss the last Pokemon event, but if anybody keeps up with me on Facebook, I posted pictures. I was out of town attending my grandmother's hundred and fifth birthday. So, it was very worthwhile and she's doing great. Told her we were gonna start playing hundred and six and she says she doesn't want another one. She said she's had a hundred and six birthdays parties and she doesn't need another one. Anyway, that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
It's hope for you, yeah.
Yeah.
A lady that's president of our Yorkchester Neighborhood Association also has a business downtown, Mary Coates.
Correct.
Yeah, so she's very active.
She was at the meeting today.
Yeah, so she's doing it. It's great. Two things, I also attended the Islamic Society meeting. It was very good. I got there early, walked around, met a lot of people and watched them pray and all this sort of thing. It was really, really great. Mr. Gross was there. He made a good talk. Several people made presentations from different churches. Also, you know, of course, Wade White is one of my very best friends. We've been friends since early nineteen-sixties. We thought at Gaston Tech together, which is part of NC State. And he was on the ABC board. Of course, he passed away. He'd been really sick. Had cancer, several places and I was hoping he was gonna get better, taking all the treatments. But he got aspirational pneumonia at the hospital and they moved him to Portland Terrace, which I wish they hadn't, had passed away there. I hate that. But, of course, he was on the ABC board and I'm requesting that since the liaison that I'd be appointed to this board to fulfill his position on the ABC board, which is perfectly fine, fill out his term.
And I'll make the motion to approve Councilman McTeer as a member of the ABC board. And then, that would leave the liaison open if we want to appoint another liaison. That'd be fine. He would be the appointed member.
You're second?
I'll second.
All right, second, Mr. Hopkins. Any discussion? All in favor, please?
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a little bit to bring out, I spent a lot of time with the police department over the past few weeks. I'd like to thank neither Chief Smith or Assistant Chief Britton are here, but I'm sure Chief Hilton will pass along my thanks to them. On the thirtieth, I rode, I did a ride-along with Officer Adrian Marrera for about five hours on a Saturday at lunchtime is when we started. That was a very informative five hours. Very interesting. Officer Marrera is, he's fairly new on the department, two years, I believe he said. That man is sharp. He is, if you see a poster of a police officer recruiting, that would be him. He's just very knowledgeable, has no problem answering questions. One observation that I did make, and I talked to him about this, during a traffic stop, if the vehicle and the driver are from North Carolina, they have no problem at all. There's the system right there in the car. They get all the information they need. If the car has out-of-state plates, they can't. They have to call in the dispatch. Dispatch has to do that while the officer's sitting there waiting. He's doing other things, but, you know, and I'm sure it's a software issue that it just won't go outside of the state to do any history on the driver or the vehicle if they're not a North Carolina license or registration. But other than that, it was, we had several calls we went on. Couple of them were, we were driving really fast with blinking lights. Thank goodness, nobody got hurt in any way on our side or the other side. And also, on the twenty-third, Chief Britton gave me a tour of the police department, about two and a half hours. I recommend everybody take it if you haven't. It's amazing, everything that goes on inside those walls. I left there, went directly over to the rifle and pistol range. Captain Turrus and Sergeant Smith met me over there and we spent another three hours. Range has changed a lot since it got built, back when my daddy was directing bulldozers years and years ago. A lot of stuff's been added, a lot of training goes on there, a lot behind the scenes that you just pull up in the parking lot and you see the different ranges sitting there. That's not half of it. The rest of it is in the woods, around the corner, go around another corner. And it's just, it's amazing the use they've made of that property. But it was a very, very good question and answer session with those guys. Paul Smith, Sergeant Smith, the range officer, very, very proud of his job and proud of the officers coming through. They know when they come out there for their training, mainly on the pistols, they know they've gotta make him satisfied before they leave. If not, they can end up walking home. It's very strict, which we wouldn't have it any other way. On another note, Mayor, honored to be assisting you this coming Sunday. At Pisgah ARP Church, we'll be passing out some US flags to first responders in honor of fifteenth anniversary of nine eleven. And remember to keep our military first responders and their families in your prayers.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. You know, I have a quick, very quick flashback of two other characters that decided to go on one of those rides that you went on, the blue lights and sorry, two young rookie city councilmen in the seventies. David Frederick and me. And we were escorted by Professor Dean Hestick.
Oh, yeah.
And the first thing he did is drive about four, five miles and bullets started and he told us face down and don't look up, and the floor. We did and wanted to go home, but.
He wasn't the one shooting, was he?
No, he got out of the car and left us there. I mean, he was going after them, but yeah, that was, that was my point back then. And also, I did go, I make up for being absent from the mosque, the Tipton Road. I did go Wednesday and he told me y'all were there. Of course, I was, got a little sick with that and I didn't want y'all to help get it either. So, but I made it up and we chatted for a long time. As you said, it was a good visit.
I think that that's, we've got, everything else has pretty much been mentioned on the green sheet. And so, if there's.
If there's nothing else, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the council go into closed session pursuant to section one forty-three dash three one eight, dot one one, A three of the North Carolina General Statute, to consult with our city attorney, who is employed by us in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the city council in the matter of Susan Drier versus Gastonia and to consider and give instructions to our attorneys concerning the handling of a pending claim with the city of Gastonia.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Okay, turn now, Mr. J. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Hey guys, but a minute. We just been sitting here waiting for you.
Okay.
Now we got a motion to adjourn.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Does everyone have their uh annual budget?
Yes.
Mine's too heavy, but you carry mine.
Was it in our box?
Yep.
Oh, I haven't had it.
Mine's only this.
I guess we're adjourned.
Yep.
Is it still open out there? Can I get in my box? Yes, sir.
I thought this was gonna be a short meeting.
Well, we're doing pretty good until you give your report.